Okay. Well, I'm pulling up the one first, right? And then he does, okay. 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 You don't want to sit out here, up here all the time? The whole agenda? You're gonna be. Are you ready? Testing. Testing.
Just a quick update for everybody, we're waiting for Jared Sterling to come in, which is leading our prayer and pledge. He got stuck in an accident on the way here this morning from Edmond.
A lot of roads are closed, though.
Yeah, downtown.
Yeah, a lot of roads.
We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Notice that the meeting was properly posted September 2nd, 2025. For purposes of this agenda, action means any of the following amendment, approving, approving as amended, deferring, denying, giving instructions to staff may be in a recommendation to another public body, receiving documents or presentations referring to committee reconsidering, reopening, returning, or striking the item. Mr. Barnes, I always appreciate you being the backup. You'll lead us in our prayer and pledge. Natalie told me to go ahead.
Let's pray. Father God, we're getting truly grateful for the opportunities that you provide for us to serve others, or we pray that we be diligent in those duties and responsibilities. I pray for the commissioners, their staffs, the other elected officials, the Oklahoma County family, Lord, just help us to look to you for our strength and realize that, Father, the battle is not against flesh and blood, but powers and principalities, and only through your strength are we able to be victors, and we thank you for that, that you provided. Be with us today, guide us, and watch over these proceedings, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, first item of business is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number two is the claims, y'all noticed in front of you, there's a, was there a change on this one? That was the blanket, right? All right, is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number three is a RFQ, ma'am?
Good morning, this is the bid opening for CW 26025-1B. This is the rebid for Highway Materials Kevlar Edition. We received two bids. First is Atlas Paving. And the second is Haskell Lemon. And that concludes the bid opening.
I have a question for you. Could you explain how the bid process works for individuals that might be listening online?
Sure. Oklahoma County will publish bids at the request of using departments, which could be the highway districts to the assessor's office. We get specifications from the end users, and we typically publish those on bidnet.com, or bidnetdirect.com. From that point, they can contact the purchasing office at purchasing@oklahoma county.org for a complete bid packet, and that will give you all the rules for that specific bid, the specifications, and typically pricing sheets. We also publish those in the journal record, so anything that we bid out goes in the paper and online.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four is the blanket.
We had four additions come in from the engineering department. All four of these are contingent upon approval of later agenda items, and a revised copy has been given to each one of you.
Would you like us to approve it now, or approve it on contingent of approval of subsequent items?
Please.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Based on the subsequent items?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four was the blanket. Item five, there's a large consent today. Five through thirty-one are consent items, is there a motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Low, item number one, or thirty-two, sorry. This is a...
He's appointing himself.
To what could possibly be one of the most thrilling appointments?
I've, I've heard that handbook committee is, is pretty, gets pretty tense. This is to appoint me as the primary replacing Joe Blau to the handbook committee, and appointing Joe Blau as alternate, placing Karen Kent and Cody Condon.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations to Joe Blau for getting off of that. District number three, this is action for our publication list. Commissioners, if you'll bear with me, I know that you guys probably submitted your list for publications. There's been a change in the statute to where it actually allows some smaller papers. I don't know if you guys were aware, made aware of that. So let me get that statute out to you, let me defer this item until next week's agenda, get you the statute within their language, and see if there are any papers that you would like to reconsider in your districts. Is that all right?
Okay.
Okay. Item thirty-four is discussion of possible action regarding a resolution to recognize September as Hunger.
Commissioner, did you want to make a motion to that, back to defer to next week? If you wanted on there.
I mean. Okay, is there a motion to defer?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know, though, that...
It won't be able to change it.
You're gonna have to bring the item back, aren't you, Sharon? All right, okay.
So is there a motion to strike the item?
Some move.
There's a motion, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so item thirty-four is discussion of possible action regarding a resolution to recognize September's Hunger Action Month. The resolution is attached. And is there anybody here to speak from, come on down?
Good morning.
Morning, ma'am, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Introduce yourself, just in case everybody doesn't know who you are.
You bet, I'm Stacy Dykstra with the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma. And I find this a wonderful time to celebrate Hunger Action Month, and to deepen collaborations and expand partnerships to make sure that no one bases hunger in Oklahoma.
So we've been in touch with the Regional Food Bank, and been in touch with some of your offices about doing some canned food drives, and kind of doing what we can as a county to help out the rest of our family across the county. So if there's any questions, Mr. Dykstra can answer them, otherwise, I'd like to make a motion to recognize September as Hunger Action Month.
Some move?
Well, I made the motion, but... Either way, there you go. All right, so there's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sharon, this thing, wonderful, I legislate, Granicus just kicked me out all the way. Yeah. Like, I can't even vote.
Are you wanting the picture?
Yes. Guess if I stood here long enough, right?
Why it did that, but it locked up, booted me.
You're back. There we go.
We'll go over here real quick, one, two, three. Thank you.
Item number thirty-five is a specific assistance agreement between the city of Edmond. This is one that a lot of people have been waiting for. This is for the reconstruction of Coffee Creek between Broadway and Bryant. Project is not to exceed nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, and now that we have our bid for Kevlar, we can get started. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gentlemen, item number thirty-six, emergency management.
Good morning, Commissioners, this action, or excuse me, this item actually reflects two different components of the audiovisual project that we have going on at Kraus under ARPA funding. It also has a companion item that is identical on PBA, so it covers both of the bases there. This includes a notice to proceed in a change order or amendment reflecting a six thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollar and eighty cents price modification due to technical equipment that is no longer available.
Okay. You've heard the explanation, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirty-seven, engineering, this is, all of you.
This is an amendment with HOK on their design contract. Now that you went to a phased approach, and we're doing a phase two of the new jail at Grand Boulevard, they'll have to break the plans into two separate sets. Some of the inside walls will become outside walls on that phase, there'll be some roof modifications, some utility relocations, so there's quite a bit of effort to make this happen. It's a six hundred and eight thousand three hundred ninety-two dollar modification, but that's actually less than one half of one percent of the construction costs. So I never really see an architect go that low, so I'm pretty happy with it, and I'd recommend approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight is an easement with OGN to provide power to our behavioral care center. It'll be coming south off of Twenty-second Street, heading north across our property to the building. So I'd recommend that we grant him this easement.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirty-nine.
This is on our fifth floor project in this building. It's a modification to add some built-in workstations and the associated electrical data outlets and so forth for the self-service area, where people come in and actually do some document work as they're working with the court clerk. It's a forty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
An approval of that.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a...
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item number forty.
Forty, we had a conflict with the front canopy at the behavioral care center, and where the fittings go, there's a bit of a conflict, and we're doing that fitting work right now, so this is time sensitive. Change order for four thousand and eighty-seven dollars.
Okay, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number forty-one. Is Flintco agreement?
Yes, this is where we found the hydrocarbon contaminated soil on the site. It's about two tenths of an acre across seventy acres. We did have an environmental assessment that said we wouldn't find any of this until we did. So we need to remove it, take it to a landfill, the appropriate landfill, then we'll have to refill the hole that we create. We need to make sure we get it all out of there. So that's what this change order is about. We will try to find the responsible party and back bill that company through the corporation commission, and that's gonna take some time and effort, but hopefully, one day, the money will come back to us. But for now, we're gonna have to cover the cost of this, it's three hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to remove the contaminated soils.
Okay. Just so you, make sure you guys heard that we will be pursuing through corporation commission to get a refund of our money from the people that are responsible parties, so... Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, item number forty-two.
This is the associated item where we'll actually backfill the hole with some clean soil. And this is from, this is just an amendment because it's based on the prices already in the contract. It's a hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Good, any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number forty-three. Oh, okay.
We've been getting a lot of questions about how we're managing this project. There's a lot of tradespeople and subcontractors on site, and I think there's some misinformation out there, so I was asked to maybe clarify how we are managing the project. Flintco, who's your construction manager, they have five personnel that are on site daily, and then they have two more personnel that participate in this weekly for the project. You have a testing company that's basically running tests on the materials daily on that site by a full crew. Our owner's rep, Mr. Bill White, he has one personnel that's on site day, every day, all day long, and then he has five others that are doing inspections as required, which are now, as we're ramping up, almost becoming daily. And then, we as the owner, I have one personnel on site daily, and then I'm on site as needed. So I just gave you a list of about twenty people who are representing your interests on that site on a weekly, if not daily, basis. In addition to that, you have three deputy commissioners on an infrastructure committee, and you have seven citizens on an oversight committee, which is ten more people that are looking at this project monthly. So that's over thirty resources that you have watching this project. And then there are other resources inside these companies that we can call on if we need them, if there's a specific issue or item that we need to address. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understood, we've got a lot of people working on this project. There's a lot of things that we do daily that you guys don't get to see. What you do get to see usually is the financial piece, like we just went through on approvals. I sent that sheet to your offices, do you have it with you? Okay. I wanted to highlight a couple things on the finances on this project. If you look at the very top line where we started with the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, that we negotiated with Flintco, that was forty-four million four hundred thousand dollars. That was the cost of all the materials and labor, equipment, plus their profit, bonds, and insurance, and there was intended to be a ten percent contingency in that project to help us with change orders and so forth. That was the plan. Over the next four months from when that GMP was negotiated, all the bids came in from the subcontractors. And at the buyout, which is what they call it when all those bids are in, we didn't have ten percent contingency left. We had fifty-nine thousand dollars left, rather than the four million. So what that illustrates to you is how escalation costs are real. These costs escalated four million dollars over a four-month period on this project alone. And that's happening on about every project out there. So when there's delays in these projects, delays in decisions, it's real money. And it's in the millions. So four million on forty-four million, you can do the math on what it is on the two hundred million or even the seven hundred million. It's just a real world, a real world example of what escalation costs are doing to public works projects these days. One other thing that people are confused about, guaranteed maximum price, it sounds better than it really is. Even under that contracting method, if there is a issue that was totally unforeseen, totally unknown, no one could know about it, you can get a change order for that work, which you just approved a few. And so the GMP can go up. So it's our challenge to watch that and not let it get, you know, too far out of control. The GMP today is forty-five million two hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and nine dollars based on the change orders that we have approved. So it's growing a little bit. What you see on the rest of this chart is the change orders or potential change orders we're tracking. There's nineteen of them. Some of them we've approved, some of them we've denied, but some of them are still pending as we gather information to make a determination. To date on this project, there's been two hundred and twenty-one requests for information, or we call those RFIs. That's a huge amount and it's going to continue to grow. Some of those RFIs I appreciate. It's tradespeople trying to gather enough information to do the job right, just do it one time, and not make any mistakes. And those are fair RFIs. We answer every one of them. Some of them I don't appreciate when they're just trying to create change orders. Now, if it's a real change order, that's one thing. If it's, if it's not, that's the ones we've got to watch out for. So I think the good news here is there's only nineteen tracking out of two hundred and twenty-one potential to date, anyway. And just to give you an example, potential change order twelve, which you just approved on the hydrocarbons, that's a no-brainer. That's an obvious change order. We had an environmental report that said that wasn't there until it was. So no one could have known about that. There's another one. Where they asked for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and I denied that one because I don't think it was an unforeseen condition. And we're going to show you an example of that on the screen just so you'll understand how we make some of these determinations. This project was built on the computer before it's ever built in the field. This is what your behavioral care center is going to look like when it's all said and done. Why don't you flip it up? Let's look underneath that building. What you can see there in white is a lot of utility piping. There's a teal color that's communications probably, and there's a red color, which is electrical and so forth. So all that material is there. And even if it wasn't, if you're a professional contractor, you don't build buildings without putting utilities underneath them. So I'm not buying that that was an unforeseen condition. You can see it. I can see it. The whole crowd can see it. So that's why that was denied. Are you able to show us a room? He's going to walk you down a corridor and show you one of the behavioral health care rooms. That's a two bunk room, showing the interior, what it looks like. So we have a lot of information already in hand before we ever build this. So that's how we make our determination on what may or may not be an unforeseen condition. But Scott March is our GIS coordinator and our CAD technician. He's really good at all this stuff. He works in our department. If you haven't ever met Scott, if you, anything else you want to see on this, you can get with him after the meeting and he'll maybe walk you through the building. But that's all I wanted to show you today, some of the tools that we have. And do you have any questions about any of this?
Gentlemen, any questions? Clearly, there's been a lot of work put into it, so I appreciate that. Scott, I appreciate all your work on this, for sure. Commissioner, anything? All right. Is there a motion to accept report?
Motion to accept report.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you, Stacy, for a lot of clarification. Item forty-four, Sheriff.
I just want to say that I'm in constant contact with your department, and I appreciate all the updates that you give us. It's one reason I don't have any questions here today. Thank you.
And Stacy, if you would email us this, if you haven't already.
Okay.
If you could email that to all the commissioners from the staff just so we can have a, have a copy of it.
Do you want to see that quarterly, every six months? I mean, never again?
No, I think absolutely we need to continue to see it. And I think the public needs to continue to see it because it's the transparency aspect. And they need to know that what we're doing and how we're approving and what we're approving and denying is in their best interest and the protection of their dollars. So I would probably say monthly or quarterly. Do you have any?
Quarterly, fine.
Okay.
Yeah, quarterly.
Quarterly it is. Thank you, Stacy. Mr. Anderson?
Say, our annual paperwork for the grant we received from Office of Homeland Security, Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security, to maintain the mobile X-ray machines we have available to us. We use them for different significant events as requested.
Yep.
Or if one of the machines goes down at the entrance to this building, we have one that we can roll in, so.
Move the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Commissioner Lo, any comments?
None.
Commissioner Long, none for me. Any new business? Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Some of them.
There's a motion. Is there a second? A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We stand in recess.
There's motion to second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Item number forty seven, is there a motion to proceed as discussed?
Motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
There's motion to second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item forty eight, is there a motion to proceed as discussed?
Some will.
Thank you.
Second.
In a second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion second. Yeah. There we go. Alright. I still don't have any citizen participation seeing the business of the V O C C conducted, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Stay tuned and we'll get to P V A. Sir. Thank you. Stacy, this is the easement that we just granted. Alright, I'm in. You're in. Good to go. Okay, we'll call this meeting of the public building authority to order notice that the meeting was properly posted on September second twenty twenty five, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion to second all those in favor.
Aye.
Item number two is claims, there motion to approve claims.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item numbers three are contracts for metro parking, is there motion to approve?
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Item number four is carryover approchi appropriations of fifteen thousand two hundred and five, is there motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five is a also a transfer special rev to P V A special rev of three forty nine five forty one nineteen.
This is to support, this is to support an upcoming change order in that amount uh in the I C B building, uh you'll see that coming up shortly.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion to second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, six.
Item number six is a companion item for emergency management that David Barnes referenced in the V O C C meeting.
Yep, this is for the E V project and no longer is there there motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's motion and a second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any citizen participation?
Sure.
Seeing none board comments commissioner low? Commissioner one? Any new business? Seeing none, we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Uh here's your easement.